Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, Kettering City Council. Today's date is October the 12th, and as always, we begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, we'll pause for a brief invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of these responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Miami Valley Cable or Communication Council TV operator in the back, Mike Soprani. Mike, thank you as always. Next, we'll move on to proclamations and special presentations.
Approve the minutes?
Oh, minutes. You want those approved? Okay, fine. Be that way. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Mr. Lauder. I'm having trouble with those minutes the last...
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from both the council meeting and workshop from the September -- from the date of September 28th, 2021. I find them both in order, and therefore move for their approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Color roll, please.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes. Now, we'll move on to proclamations and special presentation. First, an appointment to Sister Cities Joshua Wyland. Is Joshua here? For a term ending 12/31/23. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you, Joshua. Next, we'll move on to a proclamation for Make a Difference Day. Vice Mayor Kleipass.
Thank You, Your Honor. I have a proclamation this evening. Whereas Make a Difference Day connects people with opportunities to serve, strengthens communities, and promotes civic engagements, and whereas with the continued spread of COVID-19, the need to highlight the importance of volunteerism has come into sharp focus. And whereas, established over two decades ago by points of lights, the city of Kettering is proud to be nationally a nationally recognized participant. And whereas, the city of Kettering will provide opportunities for all to participate in this day of service designed to leverage the dedication, commitment, and power of volunteers to address a variety of needs in our community. And whereas volunteers for ser -- from service clubs, faith-based organizations, local schools, and local residents will assist the city by removing invasive honeysuckle planting seedlings and dispersing seeds at the habitat...
...environment center, and creating holiday greeting cards for active-duty military members and nursing home residents at either Christ United Methodist Church or at their own home with kits provided by the city of Kettering Volunteer Office. Now, therefore, Donald E. Patterson, mayor of the city of Kettering, Ohio, does hereby proclaim October 23rd, 2021 to be Make a Difference Day in the city of Kettering, and urges all citizens to observe this day by joining efforts to make a positive impact and truly make a difference in our community. Signed this 12th day of October in the year 2021, Donald E. Patterson, mayor of the city of Kettering.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Kleipass. Accepting the proclamation this evening, Don Kirchner, who is our volunteer administrator. Don?
You have a few words for him? Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm excited. This is my first Make a Difference Day as the new volunteer coordinator for the city of Kettering. We've already distributed 52 card-making kits to schoolchildren, area residents, and area groups. We've already received 50 prior to that day, so we're expecting about 500 in advance of Make a Difference Day on Saturday, the 23rd. For anybody who is interested in participating, we have more information on the volunteer Kettering website. You can sign up there, or you can just show up. You're also welcome to stop by. Myself and Nick Saris will be happy to answer questions, and we hope to see many of you there. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Don. And I'm sure you will see most of us there, you and Nick both, so thank you. Next, we'll move on to a presentation. Introduction of promoted police sergeants. Chief Brotsman.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce the newest supervisor for the Kettering Police Department, Sergeant Chris Sanford. With Chris tonight is his wife Justina and his mother Kristy Sanford. Chris is originally from East Liverpool, Ohio. He attended Kent State, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and after graduation, he returned to East Liverpool, where he worked for the police department as a dispatcher. On July 13th, 2009, he was hired by the Kettering Police Department as a patrol officer. Chris worked the road for the first five years of his career, and then transferred to the support division as a personnel and training officer in 2015. This position is very important to the police department, as they coordinate yearly and specialize training for all its members, and keep track of all outside training for its members as well. But that's just the training portion of it. Most of their time is occupied with the personnel side, which is them working with HR in hiring new employees. In the year Sergeant Sanford was assigned to that position as Patrolman Sanford, he had a hand in hiring almost 80 people for the police department. Because of that, he has built a strong relationship with a lot of our employees, and this position is important because they are the face of the police department during the recruitment. They're usually the first person the applicants have contact with within the police department, and we need that interaction to be very positive. And with Chris, it always was. There are some positions the chief works with closely, and one of those is a training and personnel officer, just because of what they do. And quite frankly, at times, I'm not sure if Chris thought that was a real positive thing, to be honest with you. But over those past six years, I had the privilege to get to know him and observe his work ethic and people skills, and I was nothing but impressed. Chris is well-respected by members of the Kettering Police Department, its citizens, and from agencies across the country who he's had contact with while recruiting individuals. And he's going to do a great job as a sergeant. Chris, I can't thank you enough for all you've done for the police department and the city, and I can't wait to see what you're going to do for it in the future. Congratulations. It's okay with you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Chris's wife up, Justina, to pin on his badge.
Always hard to get that.
He's grimacing.
Well, the good news is, you stick yourself, we got a whole fire department to help you. No worries, no worries.
You need to Velcro those.
There you go.
I'm going to ask Chris to say a few words, but I would like to tell you what he brought up in my office about five minutes ago. He's been promoted for a couple of weeks now. We have hired somebody since that time, and we did have their swearing-in ceremony. And when I asked for the pinning of the badge, everybody in the room looked around at each other with no badge. Chris informed me that that wouldn't happen if he was theirs. I'm just very grateful for the opportunity given in 2009. In the last 10 or 12 years I've been here, it's been an honor to work for the city, and I continue to look forward to working in the future. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Hey, Chief. 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 Can you grab that box? I don't know what that box is, but...
We're going to move it.
Oh, you're going to move it? Okay. Looking a little trashy up there, Mitch. Next, we'll move on to presentation -- excuse me, for award presentation, Fire Department Citizenship Award. Chief Robbins.
I kept looking at the pictures, and I thought, "That's a background, a pin in his badge." Unfortunately, Jeffrey Saylor, the Fairmont student, came out of the weather, and he won't be able to be here tonight, so we'll do his at a later time. But tonight, Your Honor and council, we have citizenship awards from the Kettering Fire Department. The citizenship award is awarded to people not associated with the Kettering Fire Department who distinguish themselves apart from others in actions that go above and beyond what would normally be expected or required from the average citizen at the scene of emergency. Ethan Huey, if I could have you come down, please? At about 4:25 in the morning on May 16th, 2021, 19-year-old Ethan Huey was beginning his road trip to an area near Pittsburgh, PA, to pick up his girlfriend. As he drove down Purdue Drive towards Dorothy Lane, he noticed an orange glow that looked like fire. Ethan called 911 as he turned on down the lane to investigate. Ethan parked his car and walked towards the rear of the house to find that the back deck and the exterior of their house was on fire. With their dispatcher's encouragement, Ethan knocked on the door until someone answered. Ethan asked the person, "Do you know your deck is on fire?" The occupant said, "Yes, we had a campfire last night." Ethan said, "No, your deck is on fire." The person looked out the back door to find a large fire, then returned to the front door and thanked Ethan for alerting them. Thanks to Ethan's quick actions, all occupants and pets exited the house safely, and the Fire Department extinguished the fire just before it extended into the attic of the house. Ethan Huey didn't hesitate to call 911 and alert his neighbor when their deck fired and only minutes away from spreading into the house. This action undoubtedly saved their home and additional fire damage, and potentially could have saved their lives. Ethan Huey is being awarded a citizenship award from the Kettering Fire Department that really reads, "For distinguished acts of unselfishness and citizenship by taking action to help a citizen of our community, your actions of calling 911, alerting your neighbors when their house and deck were on fire embodies the citizenship that this award was designed to recognize for your actions on May 16th, 2021." Congratulations. David Vernazi? Is that right? And Craig Ballard, can you come down, please? Again, both these recipients will be receiving the citizenship award, which I read the criteria for prior. On the afternoon of May 10th, 2021, David Vernazi and Craig Ballard both happened to be driving north in separate vehicles on Troyer Road when they each noticed smoke that appeared heavier than what you would normally see at a barbecue. Both men turned onto Moss Oak Drive to investigate when they found fire coming from the side window of a multi-unit apartment building. Both men quickly parked their cars and ran towards the building, with David going towards the front and Craig going towards the rear of the building. Neighbors began coming out, and Craig said that -- and Craig said that he told someone to call 911. Craig and David both moved along the side of the building when one neighbor said that someone was still inside the unit. They forcefully opened the apartment door to find the apartment filled with heavy smoke and a severely injured elderly woman sitting in a recliner. David covered her with a bed sheet, and happened to be -- that happened to be sitting in a pile of laundry, and Craig searched the rest of the apartment for other victims. David and Craig then carried the victim to a chair on the patio, and then carried her to -- in the chair to safe spot away from the building. With a neighbor watching over the victim, David and Craig continued the search of the building until fire crews arrived on scene. David and Craig selfishly jumped into action when they saw smoke in the area, and they didn't just -- and that just didn't look right. Without hesitation, they bravely risked their own lives and carried a fellow citizen out of a burning apartment. Your citizenship award reads, "For distinguished acts of bravery and citizenship by risking your own life to help a citizen of our community, the actions you took carry a fellow citizen out of an apartment fire bodies the citizenship that this award was designed to recognize for extraordinary action and heroics on May 10th, 2021."
Did you want to say anything at all? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right. Next, we'll move on to public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing on proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission recommended that the proposed amendments be approved, and the Planning Commission's certification packet is made part of the record. Staff will give a presentation. After the presentation, we will take comments from those members in public who are present tonight and wish to be heard. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Now, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. First, we'll begin with staff presentation. Mr. Robillard.
Thank you, Your Honor. This first presentation is in regards to our comprehensive plan. Most of the business park -- most business park zoning districts are categorized as professional office and research category in our comprehensive plan, land use plan. The land use plan category currently recommends professional office and research facilities exclusively only. When the comprehensive plan was written, typical business and research park development consisted of standalone buildings surrounded by acres of landscaping. Any supportive services, such as residential or commercial, usually located several miles away, causing more traffic and longer distances to reach those. Modern business research-type and research park-type development is pushing for onsite or close proximity of supportive retail, restaurants, and higher-density housing. These mixtures of uses help create a sense of place and is attractive for modern businesses. Further mixing compatible uses allows for more efficient use of land, less reliance on vehicle trips, and more shared use of facilities and resources. So identifying professional office and research facilities with supportive retail and high-density residential development, as shown on the slide there, as recommended by the Planning Commission, will subsequently support changes to the zoning code allowing these uses in the business park district. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Robillard? Thank you. Next, we have comments by the public, five-minute limit. It's time for public comments, five-minute limit. Each person may speak only once. Please do not repeat the material that has already been covered. Is there anyone I'd like to speak for? Please, come on down and give us your name and your address, please.
Very interesting you -- I just had that presentation from Mr. Robillard. My name is Doug Conan with Air Tech Environmental. Air Tech Environmental is a growing business. It's been strengthened or had some problems here. We've been -- I've been a Kettering resident for 60 years and a business owner. I've invested at 3508 Wilmington Pike, and since way before 2007, I've invested a great deal of my time and tax dollars to the city of Kettering. But since I'm only allowed five minutes of time, I'm going to make this quick, and respectfully request that all comments and questions be deferred until after my allotted time. Since moving my environmental consulting business here from West Carrollton in 2006, I've seen my south neighboring property, building property vacant for over 10 years. My north vacant -- my north property was vacant over a year, and then just finally reoccupied with no exterior improvements, other than a few bags of mulch. I daily, as well as other people that travel through the city, go through a blighted community. This is not the vision I had, or I thought, for the city of Kettering. We have plenty of vacant buildings, vacant lands, the need to be occupied. Put small business in there. I understand that the city is getting a million-dollar grant that you applied for and from the small business, but I'm not seeing that effort or that money to support the small business in our community. I've been aggressively trying to grow my business, but I can't. I don't have enough room in my building. I've seeked with staff members of the city of Kettering to find alternative location. I prefer to stay in the city, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen. I may as well close my business doors, just like all my neighbors down the street. This is a very serious problem for the city of Kettering, and I hope I've got your attention. There was a plan put together by at least three members that are sitting here today for an improvement for Wilmington Pike back in 2013. Since that time, there've been 14 of those businesses moved out. We have too many vacant buildings. Let's put them to good use. I had a concept to bring the former Kawasaki building at 3916 that I've struggled for over a year to try to get an occupancy permit. I've been given delayed other things I have to do in order to get that done. I can't see how the city of Kettering can have in good faith accept over a million dollars from the Small Business Administration when small businesses are closing and have been closing. This is a serious issue, not only affect this, but all the kids in our community, in the schools. The tax dollars that aren't being generated to support our schools because of the vacant buildings. I'm asking for some assistance to provide for businesses like my own when I'm trying to develop in a blighted area and just get merely an occupancy permit. Paint the building puts a reason about amount of landscaping around it. I've talked with city staff. They're asking for 100 -- almost, excuse me, 98 trees and bushes to be put around the building, which my landscape expert says that's unreasonable. First of all, the neighboring property has trees that are going to block it. Plus, not only the trees, it's a three-story building. There's no sunlight. I'm going to have dead trees and investment into the community, and it's going to keep a blighted neighborhood. There needs to be some action here, and I'm asking for the city to support small business. I'm not the only one struggling in this area. I know of others, same corridor, and they're about ready to close. Please instruct your staff to consider and work with small business, and don't be unreasonable in trying to make this city a better place. I feel it's wrong for the city of Kettering to apply for federal small business funding while it isn't supporting small business, specifically in the Wilmington Pike improvement area. This plan was put into existence over seven years ago. In City of Kettering Council, all management, employees have to act in good faith with the Small Business Administration and support small business. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Can you state -- was your address 3508? Is that what I...
That is correct.
3508 Wilmington. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else I'd like to speak? Okay. What? Ah, come on down, please. Thank you.
This is for the public hearing, for the confusion in the front row. This is for the public hearing, just so you know. Yeah. It's all good.
Okay. Anybody else I'd like to come speak?
Not yet. This is for the zoning. Yeah. I'll make sure he doesn't get...
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. City Council will take this matter under advisement. Legislation amending the comprehensive plan will be considered at a future council meeting. Next, we'll move on to the second public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning code. The Planning Commission recommended that proposed amendments be approved, and the Planning Commission's certification packet is made part of the record. Staff will give a presentation. After the presentation, we will take comments from those members of the public who are present tonight and wish to be heard. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Now, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Staff presentation, Mr. Robillard.
Thank you, Your Honor. This particular request involves a text amendment to the zoning code. There's three major parts to it. The first part is to amend the uses in the business park district to allow for multifamily residential housing as a conditional use and restaurants as a conditional use in the business park zoning district. Second part of the request is to add restrictions on those uses. We want to make sure that they don't detract -- adding residential and restaurants does not detract from the main purpose of a business park zoning district category. The third part is to simply make some corrections in the zoning code that we found over the last several months. And that really relates to changing the letter "I" to "BP" in several sections of the code. The "I" refers to industrial, and "BP" refers to business park. And that was simply an oversight on our part from the last time this came through. As explained in our previous public hearing regarding the comprehensive plan, the business park-type development has changed over time, really pushing us to relook at how we develop business park properties and to allow for more supportive-type uses. Modern business and research park-type development is... Now, the list of permitted uses spelled out primarily -- spelled out the primary purpose of the business park districts, like I said, which is industrial in nature. Large-scale business park zone areas can be compatible with a broader mix of uses due to large lot sizes and amount of lands available for development. Two such examples are the Miami Valley Research Park and the Kettering Business Park. On the other hand, allowing that broader mix of uses in a small-scale type business park allow for incompatible uses, preventing the development of industrial-type uses. An example of this would be if you were to allow for residential development next to a industrial business that had chemicals and other hazardous materials, they would be required to add in extra building code, fire code, and other code standards to run their business, thus making it harder for those industrial businesses in that zone. So what we'd like to do is add in... Oops, this is not working for me. I apologize. Is add in two standards for residential development and restaurants. For residential... For residential, we're recommending that it be 10 acres minimum lot size and at least 200 units. That will push development into a very purposeful, larger-scale development that will support and is intended to support the Business Park development. Restaurants would be the same thing, at a minimum 10-acre lot size with 20,000 square feet of restaurant use. That about covers it. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Roblard? Thanks, Tom. Now, time for public comments. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Each person shall speak once. Before you begin, if you would give us your name and address, please, come on down.
Good evening. I'm Leanne Jablonsky. I live at 1566 Crescent Boulevard. I'm Marionist Sister Leanne Jablonsky, a resident of our Marionist Sisters House in Kettering. I'm a plant ecologist scientist who directs the Marionist Environmental Education Center, known as MEAC, at the Mount St. John property, 4435 East Patterson Road, right across the road from the new development. So I'm also the workplace neighbor where the new development is proposed in Research Boulevard. I've been there for over two decades. Thank you for the opportunity to share public comment, and special thanks to your city manager, Mark Schwerderman, for providing very helpful information. As a citizen of Kettering, I am grateful for the old, beautiful, shady trees and green spaces in my and other neighborhoods and the aesthetic value these provide to the human spirit. I similarly value being one of the tree planters that in 1998 helped complete the plantings of the now becoming mighty oaks at the Mount St. John perimeter that looks out over the Research Park. I am very concerned about a zoning change that would allow intense housing development on the green space and Little Beaver Creek watershed floodplain. Dayton Daily News reports spoke of 300 units. I can't imagine that all fitting without impeding the view, and knowing it could come with likely one and a half car spaces per unit, that would be 450 more cars and an inevitable increase in traffic, noise, and pollutants. Cars and increased impermeable surface of roads and pavement surface would undoubtedly result in higher runoff, soil erosion, and vehicle fuels, oils, asphalt, and other waste pollutants ending up in the Little Beaver Creek waterway that runs through our neighborhoods and creeks that we all enjoy on the bike trails. I am very concerned that planning be wise, having experienced development that has negatively impacted the natural areas of Mount St. John. For example, when the building that Woolport now occupies on the corner of Research and Shakertown was built, Shakertown, Shakertown Road was widened, nibbling away at several acres of land on the Mount St. John perimeter. We were told this was because of the retail area access needed. Well, some 10 years later, we still haven't seen any of that retail development. The Mount St. John landscape is being restored with native species of wildflowers that attract songbirds and beautiful butterflies and other pollinators and wildlife of Ohio's heritage. We work hard to assure that the rainfall that lands on our property is retained and supports the wetlands and wildlife. We've created rain gardens, habitats with native Ohio plants, and have reduced our mowed areas, which discourages geese and enhances other beautiful species. I hope that any development that occurs on the Research Park land that the city of Kettering owns values this continuity of green space and ensures that humans and nature can beautifully coexist, enhanced by native ecosystems that require less water and no fertilization, and be more resilient to climate change. What if this area could express this harmony more fully by being intentionally sustainable in choices that reduce negative impacts and enhance the positive beauty and time with energy savings besides? With our MEAC team, I'm willing to offer time to explore and think through some sustainable options for our future as good neighbors for decades and tree canopies to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sister.
Anyone else like to speak? Sure, come on down.
Hello, my name is Brent Devitt. I reside at 5248 Coral Oak Circle in Kettering. I'm the chair of Cycle Kettering, which is a chapter of the Bike Miami Valley Organization, which is an advocacy group for cycling throughout the region. I'm also the executive director of the Burgamo Retreat Center, which is one of the ministries located at Mount St. John just across County Line Road and just across from what would be a proposed development project that the zoning would allow. I come here today as a concerned citizen of Kettering with questions about the proposed rezoning of this Research Park property. So I do have a lot of questions regarding the environmental impact such a, such a development would have that the rezoning would allow, and I share this, some of the same concerns that have just been addressed earlier by Sister Leanne. From a neighborly perspective, working at Mount St. John on an adjoining property in Green County to the east across County Line Road, we have over 8,000 guests at the Burgamo Center each year. Increasingly, noise from County Line Road traffic is becoming more and more of a concern as the noise reaches the Retreat Center and the other businesses and residences on that property. So rezoning would allow as many as possibly 300 residential units. I have concerns about increased traffic that the potential development project and the high density of units would create as much as Mount St. John is welcoming to visitors. We've had to increasingly post visitor expectations and regulations and remind visitors at Mount St. John that it is a private property. I'm worried about the increased traffic that rezoning to this high-density potential for residential units. The intersection at County Line and Shakertown and Research is the site of a number of accidents. I personally was the victim of an accident there while cycling in 2011. I've witnessed a car versus cyclist accident there. I've witnessed car versus car accidents at that same intersection, and one of my family members has experienced a car accident there as well. So with increased traffic, concerns about safety at that particular intersection. Particular concerns about any more driveways that might be constructed along County Line Road, along the path of the Iron Horse Trail multi-use side path. Each driveway along a path creates one more intersection and opportunity for an accident to happen with cyclists. I also question, no, as much as Montgomery County wastewater treatment plant and the Kettering composting facility have done a great job, I have to say, in containing odors in that area, I really would question how seriously interested a developer might be in building spaces or residential areas so close to those kinds of facilities. So I hope a lot of serious thought goes into addressing these concerns and rezoning of this parcel of land, and so thank you for the time to, to share these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come speak before the matter? Whoop.
No, he's with the.
On the zoning?
On zoning. Sorry.
We will let you come up here, I promise.
After all the residents.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on this particular issue? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and City Council will take the matter under advisement. Legislation amending the zoning code will be considered at a future council meeting. Next, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone like to speak about items about legislation on tonight's meeting? Okay, we'll move on to ordinances and second reading. We have none, so we'll begin with resolutions. Vice Mayor Clepass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The estimated cost is $15,000. The amount budgeted is zero. Requested by Parks, Recreation, and Culture Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Roblard.
Mr. Schwerderman.
Mr. Schwerderman.
Okay, Mr. Schwerderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an application for grant proceeds from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for $15,000 for the purchase of trees in 2022. It is a matching grant, and the matching funds will be supplied in our tree replacement program funded in the capital improvement plan for 2022. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Schwerderman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution, excuse me, authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for security improvements for the north and south buildings. The estimated cost is $85,000. The amount budgeted is the same as being requested by our Public Service Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwerderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a 2021 capital improvement plan, capital improvement plan budgeted item for security improvements at our north and south building. The improvements would be related to the extension and enhancement of our existing camera system, as well as for our blue light alarm system, which is a notification of emergency, and our panic buttons throughout the two buildings. It would also provide additional egress pathways for departments within the north building that currently only have one access point. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Schwerderman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the addition of a new rooftop HVAC unit at the Public Service Building. The estimated cost and budget is $25,000. It is requested by the Public Service Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Schwerderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This would be an HVAC installation at our administrative building of the Public Service Department. Several of those offices are currently served by window air conditioning units. A more efficient method will be the installation of this rooftop HVAC unit, and it is budgeted in the 2021 capital improvement plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Schwerderman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for improved signage for the north building. Estimated cost is $30,000. $60,000 is budgeted. Requested by the Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second. Oh, sorry, my mistake. Mr. Schwerderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This would improve and modify our wayfinding signage for the north and south building based upon changes that have been recently made to the north building with the police administration construction. It would also place a new sign over the records area of the police department, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Schwerderman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the creation of a new locker room for security personnel at the Municipal Court Building. The estimated cost is $85,000. That is the amount budgeted requested by the Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Schwerderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This also is a 2021 CIP project and would add men's and women's locker rooms for our security personnel at the Municipal Court Building. The project will take place in a previously used temporary office location inside the building, so it will be an internal fit-out adjacent to the entrance of the building. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Schwerderman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing curbs, sidewalks, and drive approaches as part of the Smithville Road resurfacing dash Wilmington Pike to the North Corporate Project, project number 02-134F. This is being requested by our engineering department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a project that is proposed for 2022, which would resurface Smithville Road from Wilmington Pike to the North Corporation limit with the city of Dayton. The proposed project includes concrete repair of deteriorating curbs, sidewalk, and drive approaches, which would be assessed to the adjacent property owners. This resolution tonight is the first step in that assessment process. Construction on this project would not begin until spring of 2022. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstresser? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing curbs, sidewalks, and drive approaches on various streets as part of the 2022 curb, sidewalk, and driveway approach repair project, and that is project number 05-122. It is requested by the engineering department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. Similar to the previous resolution, this one is for the 2022 curb, sidewalk, and driver approach repair program. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Bergstresser? Being non-color roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution accepting the Prue Woods Platte dedication for Prue Woods Drive, Miami Valley Research Park, Section 6B dedication for Donation Circle, and Cispro Ventures Platte 1A dedicated for College Drive, and confirming the completion of public streets and public street improvements shown thereon requested by the engineering department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution would accept for maintenance three streets that have recently been constructed in the city of Kettering. The first is the extension of College Drive adjacent to the Community Tissue Center development. The second one is Donation Circle, which is adjacent to the Life Connection project that is currently under construction, as well as Resonetics off College Drive. And the third is Prue Woods Drive from Dorothy Lane back to the Kettering Recreation Complex, but the public, public right-of-way portion of that roadway, which extends about 600 feet south of Dorothy Lane. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstresser? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes or an approved cooperative purchasing program to purchase a medic. The estimated cost is $332,000. That is the amount budgeted. It's requested by the Fire Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstresser. I mean, Mr. Schwerderman. I'm looking at you.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution would allow us to begin the purchasing process for a replacement medic unit for the Fire Department. It would include not only the medic unit, but also the ProCOT and power load system, which provides mechanical assistance for patient transport, consistent with recently, other recently purchased medic units. The significance of this resolution is that this is intended to be a purchase from our American Rescue Plan funds, and while most of that activity will not start until 2022, we're requesting action in 2021 so that we can get started on this item as it has significant lead time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Schwerderman? Being non-color roll, please.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a supplemental grant from the U.S. Small Business Administration. Estimated cost is $1,014,956.33. It's being requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwerderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a, as mentioned, a
approach repair project, and that is Project Number 05-122. It is requested by the engineering department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. Similar to the previous resolution, this one is for the 2022 curb, sidewalk, and drive approach repair program. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Bergstreser? Being none, call roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution accepting the Prue Woods Platt dedication for Prue Woods Drive, Miami Valley Research Park Section 6B dedication for Donation Circle, and Cispro Ventures Platt 1A dedicated for College Drive, and confirming the completion of public streets and public street improvements shown thereon. Requested by the engineering department, I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution would accept for maintenance three streets that have recently been constructed in the city of Kettering. The first is the extension of College Drive adjacent to the Community Tissue Center development. The second one is Donation Circle, which is adjacent to the Life Connection project that is currently under construction, as well as Resonetics off College Drive. And the third is Prue Woods Drive from Dorothy Lane back to the Kettering Recreation Complex, but the public, public right-of-way portion of that roadway, which extends about 600 feet south of Dorothy Lane. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstreser? Being none, call roll, please.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes or an approved cooperative purchasing program to purchase a medic. The estimated cost is $332,000. That is the amount budgeted. It's requested by the fire department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstreser. I mean, Mr. Schwederman. I'm looking at you.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution would allow us to begin the purchasing process for a replacement medic unit for the fire department. It would include not only the medic unit, but also the ProCOT and power load system, which provides mechanical assistance for patient transport, consistent with recently, other recently purchased medic units. The significance of this resolution is that this is intended to be a purchase from our American Rescue Plan funds, and while most of that activity will not start until 2022, we're requesting action in 2021 so that we can get started on this item, as it has significant lead time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Schwederman? Being none, call roll, please.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a supplemental grant from the U.S. Small Business Administration. Estimated cost is $1,014,956.33. It's being requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a, as mentioned, a $1,014,000 grant from the Small Businesses Administration related to the shuttered venue grant program, and this would be the second grant of this type that has been awarded to the city. It is awarded to the city for utilization for operating expenses, for the continuation of operating expenses at the Frayage Pavilion, beginning with the start of the pandemic and running through June of 2022. As mentioned, this is the second grant. This one is a little over $1 million and goes along with the previous grant that's been awarded to the city that was a little over $2 million. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Schwederman? Being none, call roll, please.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31 of 2021. The estimated cost is $1,346,956.33. Amount budgeted is zero, and it is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a 2021 supplemental related to items previously discussed on the agenda. The first would be $332,000 from the ARPA Fund, the American Rescue Plan Fund, for the medic unit. The second supplemental will be for the Special Grants and Programs Fund for the shuttered venue operators grant for the $1,014,000. There is also a supplemental to appropriate $47,565.20. This one is a little trickier in that we are simply moving money around in the special grant funds, actually because of a savings. We entered into a special grant program in 2020 that required a match of that dollar amount. That match is no longer required, so we'll use that appropriation for other special grants and programs. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Schwederman? Being none, call roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances in first reading. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering to allow full parking on Andrea Drive, Malone Avenue, and Redwood Drive by repealing Sections ID and E of Ordinance Number 397704 requested by the Engineering Department. First reading.
Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This proposed ordinance would actually rescind a no-parking restriction on various streets north of Alter High School, on Redwood Drive, Malone Avenue, and Andrea Drive. These restrictions were put in place back in the, around 2004 in regard to parking issues that were being seen in the neighborhood in regard to Alter High School students parking on those streets. Since that time, Alter High School has improved the parking on their property, which has alleviated the issue of overflow student parking in this neighborhood. Also, homeowners in the area have requested that the restrictions be removed since the parking issues no longer exist. This is an ordinance in first reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstreser? Being none, move on to the next ordinance in first reading of Vice Mayor Clepass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance in first reading also to amend the traffic control map and the traffic control file of the city of Kettering to show the installation of traffic signs on various streets in the city of Kettering, Ohio, requested by the Engineering Department. The first reading.
Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This proposed ordinance would implement no parking in a couple areas around the Oak Creek Swim Club. The first is on the south and west side of Overbrook Road from Pondview Drive to Armont Circle, and also I would call seasonal no parking from noon to 8:00 p.m. from the dates of May 22 through September 7 on the north side of Pondview Drive from Overbrook and then continuing west for about 875 feet. This is in relation to the season that the Oak Creek Swim Club operates. We've had, received some concerns from residents regarding emergency access in this area, and we tested these restrictions out over this past summer. They were well-received, and so we were requesting they be made permanent. Again, permanent parking on Overbrook Road and then permanent seasonal no parking on a portion of Pondview Drive. It is an ordinance in first reading. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Bergstreser? Thank you. Moving on to certifications and petitions. Ms. Kozinski.
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. City Manager Report and Community Update. Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few, a few slides for you this evening. The first is to remind everyone that Medicare Open Enrollment begins October 15 and runs through December the 7th, and we will once again be offering assistance to residents through our Kettering Connection Program. Kettering Connection can be reached at 296-3330. Our leaf pickup program will begin this coming Monday, October the 18th, and will run through the late part of November. Residents are encouraged to rake their leaves to the curb. They do not have to be in the street, just adjacent to the street, and we also encourage them to only place leaves there. Yard debris is dangerous to our staff and our equipment in the leaf pickup season. Yard debris can be taken to our yard debris center on Woodman Center Drive. Residents can keep informed of where we are throughout the city during the leaf pickup program by calling our hotline at 296-2472. The Kettering Municipal Court operation is offering a court amnesty weeks from October 18 through October 29, where folks can take advantage of an amnesty program to get their accounts paid in full. The program can, you can receive more information about the program by calling the Municipal Courts, the Clerk or Court's office at 296-2461. National Drug Takeback Day will take place on Saturday, October the 23rd, from 10:00 to 2, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at our Government Center parking lot or police building. So that's 3600 Shorey Road. We'll be accepting pills, but no liquids or syringes. Make a Difference Day, as mentioned earlier, will take place on the 23rd of October, and residents can assist with our card-making project by contacting the volunteer office at 296-2433. We'd like to congratulate Orchard Park Elementary School, who has been notified that they have been awarded the 2021 National Blue Ribbon, National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence designation. So congratulations to the Kettering Public School District. Beggar's Night will be on October 31 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We encourage everyone to participate and to be safe. Thank you, Your Honor. That's our community update for this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Schwederman? Next, we'll move on to audience participation point and program. If you'd like to speak for council, please come on down to the podium. We do have a five-minute limit, and we need you to state your name and address. Come on down now. You waited a long time for this, so.
My name is William E. Allen. I'm from 2025 Pauline Avenue. I wrote you guys something today. City Council, I want to make a complaint about Hank's Pub. The music is too loud, and can you tell the owner on October 31st, no music at 6:00 p.m.? Because I'm, I'm a little afraid because I think little kids won't like the, the music, and the parents are, I don't think the, the parents would be like so happy with them. Please do something about it, please, because Trick or Treat Halloween night is one of my favorites. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting. Anyone else like to come speak for council, please? Come on.
My name is Renee Isaacs. I'm at 2025 Pauline Avenue, William's mom. I spoke before, and we spoke with Chief Protsman before the meeting started, but since we were here, I wanted to say that Hank's Pub is still an issue. The outdoor music, it's a guarantee, it's happening right now as we speak. It's tiring. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. Patty Clay, 1701 Fleischer Avenue, and I'm here for the same issue I was two months ago, and I just wanted to let you guys know that the police go out and tell them to turn it down, and they just ignore the police. And I just think that's kind of rude that they think they're above the law. I, I obey the law, so that's all. Thank you.
And we appreciate that. Anyone else? Please, come on down.
My name is Joy Lucas. I live at 1529 Fleischer Avenue. My concern is the parking situation. We discussed this the last time we came to council. It has not gotten any better. They are parking on the front on Patterson Road where you can't see to get out. They're parking on sidewalk, which I didn't think was acceptable for people to do. On the side of the bar, Hank's Bar. There's, they can unload, but my goodness, they park there for four and five hours, some of them. I went down the street a week or so ago. There was a beer truck there. Fine, he had his lights on, alerting us. Parked the wrong direction, of course. Right behind it was a car parked, and then there was a car pulled in off of Patterson Road right against the sign that, stop sign or what others there. I mean, you couldn't even have known, if you didn't know what you were doing, that there was a stop sign there. They just park anywhere they want to, and it seems like they think they can do it. Somebody parks there one day for five hours in the loading zone. I'll be honest, I did call the police, and they said, well, they probably were unloading. I said, for five hours? I'm sorry, you've got an accident waiting to happen there at that corner, Patterson Road. I don't know if you realize how much more traffic is on Patterson Road, and for us to try to get out onto Patterson Road and people parked on the sidewalk in the front, it's just an accident waiting to happen. And I think the police department has more to do than be coming out there all the time because we call because of these instances. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Never been here before. My name's Pamela Roberts, and I live at 2001 Pauline Avenue, which used to be my father's house, but he had passed away last year. Since I've moved into the house, Hank's Pub has, I guess, changed owners and has gotten louder, and I agree with her with the parking. They're not only parking on Patterson on the side, but they're also parking in other businesses' parking lots, parking on residential grass, wherever they can park. They've even parked in the street in front of my dad's house and left their car there overnight, come back the next day to get it. So it's become an issue. The noise is really loud, and it can go on for hours. So I think there should be some kind of resolution where there's a happy medium for the residents as well as them, because I know they're trying to run a business. You know, and a lot of people have to go to bed early because they have to work, they have to go to school, whatever, and so there should be some kind of noise restriction and a parking thing. for our region. He went on to mention that Mayor Patterson has been instrumental in economic development initiatives within Kettering, and has worked diligently to enrich the quality of life for all citizens in this community. We're honored to have him as our mayor. We're honored that he received this award. And I just was notified that an Amazon delivery was just, just took place. These are Amazon folks from last mile of Kettering or something. So it's my honor to represent the Coalition and also staff to present you with this award.
Congratulations. It's the second time they've gotten me with that award.
And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Lawter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two items. The first is several of us attended, had the privilege of attending on September 29, the Optimus Installation Dinner, where they recognized what they called the Friend of Youth Citizen of the Year. And the recipient this year was our own Officer Ed Drayton from the Police Department. And we were glad to see him get that award, very much deserved for his efforts and his role as one of our police officers. Also, in late September, on the 30th, several of us had the opportunity to participate in the City Beautification Awards Drive Thru. Normally, we have the big ceremony here at a council meeting. This year, we saw the videos of all the homes that have been beautified, landscaped, that were the recipients of the awards, but we couldn't hand them anything because of COVID. So we had a drive-through in front of the Government Building back on September 30, and we were able to give those awards out. But the little caveat to this, for a variety of reasons, some of the recipients weren't able to do the drive-through. So a number of us took a handful of those awards, and we drove to their home that night and dropped them off. And I think they were tickled to death that the city, not so much us as individuals, but the city thought so highly of that, that we actually took the time to take the awards to them. The benefit from, for me, going to the home, it's one thing to see a picture of what they did, but to actually see the landscaping in person, I was just in awe. I told all of them I didn't want my wife to see any of these pictures, for the expectation that she would want me to do some of that landscaping. So, that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher.
That was cool, that's for sure. So apologies, last council, I literally swallowed a bug. And so in the middle of my talk, I was unable to finish my thought about encouraging people to vote, because it was a National Registration Day. For my friend out here, there's going to be another trunk or treat, okay, on the 24th of October, from 4:00 to 6:00, and it is actually in your neighborhood, at Greenmont Church, so right in your neighborhood. So mark that down on your little calendars. Yeah, that life is good. I had the honor, sir, to walk around with a lot of United Student Body kids from Fairmont this past weekend, doing solicitation of donations for charities. And so, what a great honor to be one of the adult reps with them. They did a fantastic job. A lot of people not home, but they work really hard all year long to give back to the community. So they've selected multiple charities, and the money goes straight to the charities. And so I uplift them. This coming Friday, there'll be a big reveal between Centerville and the Firebirds, and I plan to beat Centerville on the donations. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any formal report. I just want to make an observation that when we're not speaking on council, we're all wearing masks. And we encourage everyone to go to our small businesses, but I do encourage folks, if you can, please consider to continue to wear your mask. We're all vaccinated. We all know that, but we do that symbolically, but also for safety's sake. And there's still a lot of COVID out there, and I would encourage all of us to wear our masks, and if it's your choice, please get a vaccine. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple things. On the 29th, I had a great opportunity to present Claude Duncan, a proclamation for his 100th birthday. And it was held at his house in his garage and on his driveway, and it was billed as a drive-by birthday thing, but there must have been 40 people in the driveway that we stood around and talked. And I loudly read the proclamation, because his daughter informed me. He has a hard time healing, or hearing. So he was very appreciative, and we wish him another 100 years, and thanks for thinking of us and inviting us. On the 30th, had the opportunity with a number of council people to attend the retirement party of Tracy Leach with the Fire Department, and we thank her for all of her years of service, and wish her the best in what life brings her now. So, next, we talked about the Neighborhood Pride Drive Thru out in front of the building here, and it was, as opposed to them coming in here and viewing the video with us and all, it's not as much fun. But I think we made the best of it. I think the residents and the award winners were very appreciative, and we got a chance to thank them and show them that we appreciate the work they do in our community. So, next, we talked about Shred Day on the 2nd. That was, it's always a well-attended event. I think this year, because we didn't have it last year because of COVID, we were packed, from the time we opened to the time we closed. And usually, there's a number of lulls and breaks during that time, but I think people were having it around their house, and we're appreciative of Day Air Credit for always sponsoring that. So, thank you. With that, thank you for my award, Mr. Klepass. With that, we have no other business coming before us this evening. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is October the 26th, and with that, we stand adjourned.